I think I have a family.
I would like to call the April 1st, 2021 School Board Meeting to order. Please rise for the pleasure.
My pleasure, gentlemen, to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can you take a roll call?
Member Corcoran, here. Member Corcoran is here. Member Peto?
Here.
Member Peto is here. Member Olson, here. Member Olson is here. Member Raphael?
Here.
Member Raphael is here. Member Tyson?
Here.
Member Tyson is here. Member Peterson?
Here.
Member Peterson is here. Member Muntner is here. All present.
Thank you, Member Clerk. At this time, I entertain a motion to approve tonight's meeting agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? None. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We'll move on to scheduled and unscheduled visitors. Did we have any email? We had no email visitors. Thank you. All right, we will move to student achievement. The Forest Lake Area Schools Indian Education Program Overview. Dr. Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have on screen the night Carolyn Latati and Indian Education, Liz Ann Chris Johnson, and others to present on our Indian Education Plan. So Carolyn, I will turn it over to you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Massey, for your floor. I'm going to share my opinion. And before I do that, I wanted to intro -- can you guys hear me? Somebody tell me you can hear me. Thank you. I want to introduce Chris Johnson. Do you want to wave, Chris? Chris is the program coordinator for our Indian Education Program for the district. And Rebecca Wolf, you want to wave, is the chair of our Indian Education Parent Committee, very active. And then Brad Ward and I are going to do some introductory comments, and then we are going to turn it over to Chris and Rebecca to give an overview of the program. I am going to share my screen, or try to. So, can you give me a thumbs up? You can see PowerPoint. Thank you. Not the most techy person. And I'm going to be the driver of the PowerPoint, so when we get to other parts, people can just tell me to advance this slide. But wanted to -- for inviting us tonight, and we're excited to give an overview. We haven't been on the Indian Education Program, has not been before the board for quite a while, so this is exciting. And we wanted to give just a brief little context of Indian education, a little bit of information about the Indian Education Program, and then we're going to share some assessment data for native and our native students in the district. So just this is very, very brief. There could be a long, but we could give, but I always like to make the point that Indian education is really broken out, the relationship between government and American Indian tribes, and we are right reserved or secured in treaties between good government and indigenous. So when the US government entered into treaties with tribal governments, they need a commitment, an ongoing commitment to support American Indian tribes to improve educational and American indigenous. So this is the really distant past for Indian Ed. Then just to get completely in terms of our district and funding, we receive federal and state Indian education funding. You'll see on the left side of the slide, a little bit of a history. Since 2017, 18, we've been gradually increasing every year, numbers of students. You'll see the total student count. Our funding is based on that count, and that count is based on the number of what we come from, the form, which the long title, it'll be at the bottom of that row on the left, the Title VI Student Eligibility Form. And I have something Chris works on, and our district are really sure that we get forms from students, and as many students as we can. It's a voluntary thing, but we like to let families know what benefits there are if they do complete that form, and then our funding is based on that. And then the State Indian Education Act, which comes to us with Minnesota Department of Indian, Department of Education, their Office of Indian Ed, is also based on the student count. You'll notice those counts are different, the state and the federal government counts American Indian students in two different ways, and so there's two different counts there. But our funding for this school year is $35,394. So that's just a little bit of background. And then I'm going to turn it over to Brad, Andrew, or Lloyd, I'm not sure, with the assessment data.
Thanks, Carolyn. Lloyd's here to back me up. The first slide is just look at the different ways that we count American Indian students. You can see that there are three bars for each of the years. It's important to note that there's some discrepancy depending upon if you're looking at what, how the federal government is classifying a student versus state of Minnesota, and we're left to try to determine who is going to be counted in our data. And that's, that, as Carolyn had talked about in the preceding slide, is linked to the funding. More so what I'd like to, I think what this graph shows you is that you can see the trend that our American Indian students are trending downward in count. But it's also important to note that historically, they are an undercounted group, and there's a large debate going about why that is. So you can go on to the next slide. So a few years ago, the district made the decision to switch from NWAEA to fast assessment data in order to see which students were at risk. This was to provide formative background so that teachers and principals and others, coaches, can alter instruction during the course of the school year in order to make some adjustments. Because the MCA was not administered last year, we do not have those data, but traditionally, those would be, at least preliminary results could be included as a part of this. It's divided up into two different things, and so you'll notice that we're going to have two slides for math and reading on risk, and two slides that are going to be showing growth levels. You can advance to the next slide. This first one is looking at math data. Again, this is formative assessment data. For the 18, 19 school year, we had fall, winter, and spring. But then in 1920 and 2021, you can see that we have fall and winter data. Notice that each of the individual tests are broken between each other by a dashed line. These graphs can be overwhelming to look at. I think the two things that are probably the easiest to think about is that we really want blue and green to be longer, and we want yellow and red to be shorter. In each of these, you can see that the general school population is the first data bar, and the second one is looking at the native. And what this is showing us is that we have a gap between the achievement results in these formative assessments, indicating that our native students are not achieving in this assessment at the same rate as the rest of the student body. And that seems to be, for the most part, a fairly consistent trend. One of the things that's also good to notice is that the bars have in themselves numbers. Those numbers indicate the sample size, or the N for the number of students in each group. And because we have far fewer native students, these data are going to be more fluctuating based on the smaller number. They're, so you have to keep that in mind, especially when you remember that the data are spread out K8. So you can go on to the next one. The next one is showing reading. Again, it's looking at the same sort of data breakdown. And what you can see in the 18, 19 school year is that the native students are progressing at a slower rate, and then the scores are stagnant for the 19, 20, and 20, 21 school year in terms of comparing them from the fall to the winter. I think the easier slides to tell this would be the next one. So in looking at this, this is measuring growth. So rather than looking at which students are at risk and which students are not, we're looking at the growth levels. And you can see that in the first few years, there are a couple of years, the native students are growing slightly slower than, or not as much, I should say, as the non-native students. But then there seems to be an outlier year, last year, where their growth was higher. And then the last year, it was on par. Next slide. Then looking at the reading scores, notice that we have an additional data point for the current year. And in looking at this, the native students are growing slightly faster in 18, slightly less in 19, quite a bit more in 20, and less in 21. So you can see that it's a little bit volatile, which indicates again a smaller sample size. And you can go on to the next one. Lloyd is here as well. Lloyd, I'm not sure if you would want to supplement before we hand off to Chris and Rebecca.
No, I think you did a better job than I would have. So I'm fine.
So, Chris?
I'm good. Can you hear me okay? Awesome. Thank you. Bonjour, I'm in. That's greetings and hello in Ojibwe. My name is Chris Johnson. My initial Nabi name is Swashkenechiganiqay, which means the lady of light in our Ojibwe language. I'm an enrolled member of the Minnesota Chipotle Tribe, Mississippi Band, from Leech Lake, and of the Eagle Plan. On behalf of the American Indian Education Program and the Parent Advisory Committee for the district, we thank you for this time to highlight our program. We'd also like to provide information and discuss how we continue to work together to support our common goals of equity and inclusion for our students, families, and district communities. Go ahead, next. We would also like to take this opportunity to respectfully acknowledge that this meeting is being held on the traditional lands of both the Ojibwe and Dakota Indigenous people, and we'd like to pay our respects to them and to the elders, both past and present. Thank you. Okay, so just a little bit about our education program. Our goal is to provide equitable, intentional, and targeted educational opportunities to every American Indian student while fostering cultural identity and pride. The purpose of our program is to increase academic, excuse me, academic achievement, increase the graduation rate, improve the school climate, and, excuse me, school climate of American Indian students in a culturally appropriate manner. In Minnesota, this program addresses five specific goal areas, and those are listed below. We'd also like to put a special focus on ensuring that our children are ready for school, all racial and economic achievement gaps between students are closed, and that all students are college-ready or career-ready. So our services, we provide student academic support and mentoring, family and community resources and advocacy, community cultural events and activities, college visits, post-secondary preparations, and also as a curriculum resource. And I have to tell you, I am sure excited about the curriculum. We had a meeting yesterday, and I'm just throwing in my two cents here, yesterday with our curriculum office, and they are excited to implement our cultural trunks. And so we're in the process of providing some great artifacts for the district to use in all the schools and all the community events, as well as high school and middle school. So we're working together, and I just got to give a shout out to those gals. They're pretty amazing and exciting. So we're looking forward to having some wonderful items for district staff to use and resources. Okay, go ahead, Karen. Our highlights, our middle school, we have affinity groups, which, of course, due to COVID, we used to meet in person, we did some distance, and then now we're back to meeting in person. So we're really excited with our middle school affinity groups. So we meet as a group and then also individually as needed. Our purpose is to build community by connecting our students, families, and with the program staff. And then while we do it, we also explore culture. Thank you, Karen. Our high school, now, what we do there is have student check-in meetings, either semester, trimester, as needed. And those have been virtual and now hopefully onsite. And we do those in groups and individual as needed. Our purpose is to connect with an adult mentor, monitor school success and well-being, and support future academic goals, personal and academic. Thank you. And then one of our other highlights that we are great, I'm very excited about, is our Indigenous Leadership Circle. That's ILC. We've been doing those virtually weekly, and then we have also, we have an open check-in time. So like on Wednesdays, I think we had it from 2:00 to 3:00 every Wednesday. I was available on Zoom for events that wanted to check in with Minj Baid. Once a month, we have projects going on. We do community service. We also discuss leadership. These are all our core values. So we have leadership with traditional values, community service and connections, cultural and racial equity, and then we also provide mentorship. So it's a great program. We're excited to continue with that. And then, of course, we've got Rebecca. You want to wave your hand over here again so we can see you? I can't see on my screen, so I'm kind of blind on here. So anyways, so our Parent Advisory Council is called PAC, and the Parent Advisory Council is exactly that. We meet monthly, and these are parents, students, staff, that come together once a month for our meetings. We've been doing them virtually and hopefully again onsite and in-person. These are conducted on the second Tuesday of the month, and everybody is welcome to attend. It's just not the PAC members, everybody, students, staff, anybody, check in with us and see what's going on. Some of our activities, we have program advisors, community cultural events. We've been doing family fun nights virtually. We just did bingo last Friday night, which was fun, and everybody got connected, so we had a good group from everybody from, I think, elementary to middle school and high school. We had elders and family members, and bingo gets kind of wild here, so just to let you know. But it was a fun time. And then, of course, we honor our graduates, and we're happy to say this year, we're looking at about 10, if everything, and everybody stays on track. So we're excited to try to come together and find a way that we're going to honor our graduation seniors this year. Thank you, Karen. And then, of course, like every program, we have growing goals. And one of ours is to expand our services to include our elementary sites. And by doing this now, we're providing curriculum support and program awareness. We'd like to get that so that we can do, get back to doing some monthly events with our elementary students. We'd also like to expand our Parent Advisory Council, so if anybody's out there that wants to join us, come on in and hang out and see what we're all about. You have a strong voice, and we love the input. And then we also provide PD and learning opportunities for district and American Indian education staff and parent committee members. And as far as I think we've pretty much covered everything, I really have to apologize because I can't read my notes from down here. For some reason, they didn't come up. But I know I have a whole bunch of things, other items I'd like to comment on, but at this point, I'll let you guys go ahead and feel free to ask questions or let me know if there's anything else I can help you with.
Member Raphael?
I have a question about, it looked like one of your services was working with students on college visits. How successful have you been at helping these students transition to something after they leave high school?
Well, you know, at this point, we have, without the college visit, the actual college visits this year, and I'm going to just kind of talk about this year, we have a really good rate of students that go post-secondary. We also, I think last year, we had, I'm going to do these numbers off the top of my head, I think we had about three students that went on to post-secondary. So considering our graduation rate, that's, I think that's a pretty good rate.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other questions? Member Tyson?
I have a question. Thank you for that excellent report. It's so exciting to see our program grow. I mean, years ago, it was Carolyn flying solo on everything, and now we just have this incredible group. I'm curious, you mentioned seniors. How many graduating seniors do we have this year?
At this point, we're on track. We have 10 seniors, and we've got, I'm going to say, we're still like a quarter out, and this is where it gets a little, it gets a little iffy at this point, but I think we're on track for seven right now, as far as I know with my numbers. And that's going to give or take. So accordingly, we're at about a 75%, I would say, which is an excellent graduation rate compared to some of the other districts that I work with.
And you mentioned that you were excited about the cultural trunks and the changes to the curriculum. What do you, what are you hearing from parents in the PACs about our curriculum? Are they feeling confident and comfortable?
What I've heard, you know, now this is, I think this would be my third year in the program. Over the past couple of years, the only feedback that I've gotten is that they would like to have more culturally relevant information. And I think that's kind of standard wherever, because I don't think the curriculum is the curriculum needs to be more relevant to today's information. So I think we need, just need to be aware of that, that some of the books and some of the things that were being taught were kind of from the past, and we just need to refresh that with our, and we try to review and overview with curriculum as it is.
Great, and we know that we're working, we're always working towards that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing nothing. All right, thank you very much for your presentation. All right, we will move forward to the Forest Lake Area Community Schools presentation. Principal DeFeo? I think there's a big delay.
Charlie, go ahead and take it away. Thank you for being here.
I think I hear it's our turn. Here we go. Good evening, School Board members, Dr. Massey, and community members. It's my pleasure to be here this evening to share with you information and updates on how our alternative programs this year within the district navigated through a pandemic with the most challenging circumstances and the evolving programming throughout the year to meet the individual and unique learning needs of our students in the district. Our staff members have been awesome and have made extraordinary efforts to provide a quality education for our students. I'm so proud of how our staff members in all programs have exemplified values of unity, grit, integrity, and modeled a caring and supportive school community as we address many issues in carrying out our mission this year. It is a testament of the staff members' resilience, creativity, and hard work. So let's begin with summer school 2020. When the pandemic started last year, all students were in a distance learning model. Through many changes and guidance from MDE, Dr. Massey and I received the green light to plan for a hybrid model of learning for K6 in summer school 2020. We implemented the hybrid model of programming last summer for students in grades K6 successfully without reports or cases of COVID throughout the summer, so we were happy about that. We were one of the very few districts who had options for students during the summer to receive support in math, literacy, and social emotional learning. Our teachers from last summer served as a resource for colleagues in their buildings as they planned for the 2020-21 school year. Summer school for grades 7, 12 included the hybrid model for 7th and 8th graders and a distance learning model for the 9, 12 students. We had more than 250 students who recovered credit in summer school during the 2020 summer school session. Last year in summer school, students learned the expectations of wearing a mask, social distancing in the hallways and classrooms for the first time ever in their school career. Teachers prepared learning materials and adapted lessons to meet the needs of students through a hybrid learning model for the first time in our district for the summer school session 2020. Currently, we are accepting registrations for the upcoming summer session. All students this year are eligible for academic support due to the loss of learning throughout the past school year. So far, we've received 900 teacher referrals from the elementary, and so we'll continue to monitor the registration from families. And we plan at this time to offer an in-person model for K12 this summer, which we're very excited about. Next, during the summer of 2020, we launched Ranger Academy, which is currently an option for families at the elementary level who prefer a distance learning model for students in grades K6 within the Forest Lake area. We started with 420 students enrolled at the beginning of the year, and we had 347 students who are currently enrolled. With the help from teaching and learning and special education, we built a program that is aligned to the grade-level standards and is engaging for students through building the positive relationships within the virtual model of learning, which they've done a phenomenal job of. The 5th, 6th grades were built within Ranger Academy to support the middle school model. That model includes a licensed science teacher, math teacher, and an ELA teacher, and one grade-level teacher who supports social studies. One of our primary goals in Ranger Academy is to have frequent communication with families, homeschool principals, and with our Ranger Academy team. Therefore, we meet weekly as a staff to have conversations about program development and any issues or concerns with students and families. We are currently receiving the results from a survey sent to all Ranger Academy families to determine programming needs for next school year related to a distance learning option for elementary. Moving on to our next program in alternative learning is our Power Up program, which is our middle school program and is designed to assist students with the necessary skills at the secondary level to be successful learners. So all students are enrolled in a general ed class, and all their classes are general ed. Power Up is a tier-two intervention, which is an elective option for students during their day at the middle school. The Power Up course focuses on building strong relationships with students and building student confidence and skills through individualized learning plans. Our Power Up team is dedicated to building positive relationships with students and is passionate about helping them succeed. Our goal in Power Up is to support students at the middle level with interventions needed for student success as they meet the ever-changing and challenging expectations at the secondary level. The WIN Club is our next alternative program, which stands for What I Need, and it's offered through targeted services. This is an after-school academic program that meets three days per week, Mondays or Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, after school, 3:45 to 4:45. The WIN Club aims to increase student achievement in core academic areas, reading, writing, math, and social-emotional learning using research-based practices that are used by our teachers within the district. It's offered at all elementary building sites and is taught by teachers from the Child's Elementary Building. We were approved by MDE to offer a distance learning option during the pandemic, so we served 110 students through that programming. The WIN model must match according to rules and regulations with alternative learning. It must match the day-school program. So WIN this year was relaunched several times to align our programming to the day-school to stay in compliance with the Minnesota Department of Ed. Our next program option in alternative learning for 9-12 is Credit Recovery. This is offered during the school year to students in the Forest Lake area to recover credits toward graduation. Many of our students need the opportunity to recover credits in courses that were taken previously. The schedule for credit recovery is set up to be flexible for the students and the teachers to maximize opportunity. Most students who enroll have already attempted the course and have put the seat time in. The goal of credit recovery is for students to meet the standards of the course to determine mastery of the content. Once the student has demonstrated that mastery of the course and the standards, the credit is awarded to the student for the course. We've had 120 students enrolled in credit recovery after school this year and expect our enrollment to grow into next year with students taking credit recovery within the district, and we also draw from other schools in the area and districts. Our next alternative program is the Forest Lake Area Community School. It's our 9-12 high school alternative option for students in the Forest Lake area. Our students have been in full-time in-person since January 27. We had many discussions about the needs of our students related to mental health and the loss of academic process, progress, along with some students just needing that extra support from our staff that many of our students refer to as their support system. Throughout the year, when our students were in distance, the distance learning model, we've addressed the basic needs of students, including food, clothing, extra support with our resources provided throughout the district and community. Our staff reached out through phone calls, home visits, and well-heard checks by the Forest Lake Police Department to engage our kids. Having the students back in person since January has helped our students adjust back into a routine with all of those supports in place. We continue as a staff to reflect on our core values that we've established and have adjusted them throughout this past year. Our community school action teams meet regularly to support equity, school culture, and instructional practices at the community school. Now is for the fun part. A team of community school and Power Up teachers are here this evening to share their instructional practices with you. Through their presentations this evening, you will see how we build unity and what it takes to engage students with the desire to achieve. They will share what makes alternative education at the community school in Power Up more than an academic opportunity. It is such a privilege to be a part of this team, and I wish to welcome the following teachers, starting with Britt Shachtel. Britt is our current Power Up English specialist. She is an alternative educator who has been supporting non-traditional learners here in Forest Lake for 19 years. She works to empower students and build their social and emotional skills, as well as their academic confidence. She teams with Kyle Olber, a math specialist, to support 7th and 8th graders in our Power Up program. Go ahead, Britt.
Well, I first want to thank the board for having us here tonight. This is a wonderful opportunity to share what we're doing in the classroom, whether that be virtually or in person. It's very nice to be in person. So as Kelly said, myself and Kyle do teach together 7th and 8th grade students. We are out there to empower them, to build their social, emotional skills, as well as academic confidence. Next slide, Megan. So like we said, we're English and math specialists, but we really get excited when we can allow students to find success in their own areas of expertise, whether that be art and connecting that to math, or reading and writing in a more non-traditional way, like through poetry or other options. Next one, please.
Thanks, Megan. One of the ways we engage our 8th graders right off the bat, and I was so excited we had hybrid learning in order to do this, is to create an identity project. These are what some of the students came up with. It's a portrait along with a poem about who they are, introducing themselves and how they see themselves with the class. And it's often commented on by people who wander through our classrooms throughout the year. Next, please. The 7th graders do something similar, but there's this much more collage-based to the last them to show off their hobbies, their talents, their goals, their aspiration, and again, to write a little bit about who they are. And this is how we really build community to start the year. Next slide, please. One of the things we've had to do this year to keep engaged is figure out how to take our in-person work and make it doable online as well. And that's something Kyle and I worked hard on through the Canvas support that we have across the district. And so you'll see, we still have some in-person work, like our dreaming clouds that we do with our 7th grade, but they could also complete that online in an online version. And then the 8th grade, we do something where we deal with who they are through personal moments at kind of a map graph and events in their life. And we had to figure out how to put that online as well. And kids have really embraced that and figured out how to be successful and engaged in our work in both places, in-person and online. Next, please. It's me. Thank you.
Okay, our next teacher, Karen Baxter, has always been a science teacher even before earning her master's in teaching secondary science, or even her BS in geology from UW River Falls. She is passionate about science education and coaching students through Thinking Like a Scientist. Prior to teaching, Karen had several different jobs: admin assistant, environmental technician, retail sales and management. Shortly after leaving the retail world, Karen had to tell her mom that mom was right, that Karen was returning to grad school to become a science teacher. Sometimes moms do know best.
Thanks, Kelly. In addition to all of that, I am a jack of all trades in science at the community school, teaching physics, earth and space science, environmental science, astronomy, meteorology, and applied science, all through a modeling style of curriculum. At the community school, I'm also the advisor for our GSA group and part of our Safe Space No Hate speech team. I'm gonna talk a little bit more about that today rather than some of the other things that I've been doing. So all around, the community school is a poster that you see here, the No Place for Hate. And as, I was really moved from our training with Carolyn and others over the summer from the Safe Space meeting that we had, that I came home and created a poster that I wanted to put in my classroom. Being the GSA advisor, I really wanted to include that as part of it. So in addition to the different skin color hands, I wanted to include that rainbow for GSA, an LGBTQ+ community. And then I really wanted to make it part of and to fit in with kind of the brand of the community school, with the blue and green background, and yet we're still a significant part of the Forest Lake schools, leaving the red and yellow, maroon and gold at the bottom there. I created it with the idea of hanging it in my classroom. Kelly loved it so much that we have posters of it everywhere and a giant banner out in front of the office. I know several people from other buildings have reached out to me to get copies of it, to be able to print and put around in their spaces as well. Next slide, please, Megan. So one of the things I did as part of this is that many of my GSA students came and told me that they had teachers and other staff, as well as students, not being, not using their correct pronouns or chosen names. And I wanted to really make sure that that, that our staff was aware of that and how important it is. So I put together Training on Gender and Racial Teaching and Advising Strategies from March 5. And one of the reasons that I did this is not just because I'm the GSA advisor, but I also have seven years of working with Twin Cities Public Television and Sci-Girls in that Gender Equitable Teaching and Advising Strategies program. And so with that, I developed this training using lots of resources that are available online and shared, I just shared some of the kind of facts that I did with that training here and that using students' chosen name and pronouns is a huge deterrent of severe depression and suicidal thoughts and behaviors. And so it was really important to me to share that with students. Megan, you can go to the next slide. And then I just wanted to include here, this is just a link. These are live links, if anybody would like them, I'm happy to share, of many of the different options available for LGBTQ students, or if you want to learn more about it just for yourself. And then I will be continuing this conversation with the staff at the community school next Tuesday during our building PD. Any questions?
Amber Tyson?
I have a question.
Hold on just a second.
Thank you, Karen. Our next teacher, Megan Boomin.
Just a second. Dale Tyson has a question.
Okay.
Is it Karen or Karen?
Karen.
Karen. Thank you for that great report, and thank you for being the GSA advisor. Now, you talked about the teaching, the gender and racial teaching and advising.
Yes.
Is that, that for your staff, or is that something district-wide?
Right now, it's our staff, but I would love to work with the district and make it a district thing. It started out for me as women in STEM. And that's through that Sci-Girls. If you have young children, you may have heard of Sci-Girls. It's an award-winning program that TPT, or Twin Cities Public Television, created and has now had going on to keep girls in science and STEM. But so much of the training in that is so relevant to our safe spaces and hate, anti-hate speech portion, as well as just the general equity, that I would really love to be able to take it more district-wide than just at the community school.
Great, thank you. And your poster is fabulous.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, Megan Boomin is our second-year teacher at the community school, teaching family and consumer science. Megan graduated with her bachelor's degree in history from St. Ben's and is completing her master's degree in teaching through the College of Saints Elastica. Prior to teaching, she has been a sub in the district since 2018. She loves working with at-risk populations and hopes to make a positive impact with her students while teaching at the community school. Take it away, Megan.
Thank you, Kelly. Hi, so I teach facts at the community school. My goal is to provide students with a variety of hands-on learning experiences that not only can be applied across the different subject areas. So we do a lot of like kitchen math, math equivalent, we experiment, we conduct some science experiments. But they're also learning some really excellent hands-on skills in the kitchen that they can take home and help out in the kitchen at home. And a lot of my students are also seniors, so at the end of the class, a lot of them thank me when they let me know that they're gonna be graduating, they're gonna be moving out soon, that they have some basic skills on how to cook in the kitchen. My first bullet point here is individualized support and relationship building. This is so important, especially with the students at the community school. Building that positive rapport is really important for me. I want to make those connections right away. And by doing that, I feel like it's a lot more successful environment. Every beginning of the school year, we'll share some fun facts, and I try to make those personal connections with them. And then another aspect is the individualized support. Because they have small classroom size, I am able to make those connections better. I'm able to demonstrate different ways. So if I notice a student is struggling, I can pull them aside and work with them one-on-one. And then with distance learning, we've been, I have some distance learners who are trying to learn at home. That's why I love Distance Learning Fridays with those students. I'm able to connect with them one-on-one, see how everything's going. They'll be able to show me pictures of what they made and talk about what worked, what didn't work. So I have some photos and this picture. So the top one is obviously during COVID times, and then the bottom one was from 2019, so pre-MAS. But I love teaching and being able to work with these students one-on-one. My next slide. So another, how I individualize and provide support is making these real-life connections. So making student choice days, students are able to choose a day where they let me know what, they have a family recipe at home that they want to try making in the kitchen and showing other students in the class. I also teach financial skills. So we, in my financial skills class, we talk about planning, how to budget, savings, investing, what it is, and how to do it early. In my food choices class, we talk about making healthy choices, and we learn about mind-plate and all those types of things that they can take with them when they are done with school. And then we also have just honest discussions about life and just making those connections and how can they apply when they learn faster when they leave. Opportunities to improve. I do a lot of one-on-one work for students who might not have done well on tests or they missed a lab, allow them to or they missed a lab, allow them to redo parts and make test corrections. And as long as they're demonstrating to me that they know a mistake they've made and they're able to make those connections later on, that's really helpful and they like that opportunity to improve. SEL, the social-emotional learning, is super important in my class, too. That's why I always take time to check in with students. If I notice a student seems off that day, I'll pull them aside and see how everything's going. Maybe it's related to something that's happening outside of school, in school. Just trying to give them that opportunity to share what's happening in their life. And we also have some fun times, obviously cooking is fun, so we play music during downtime, during labs. And then oftentimes, if I notice that notes are getting to be a little long, we give them, I give them a break to be able to check in with each other. They need that peer-to-peer connection as well. And then lastly, creativity. This is my favorite part about teaching a food class, is students really love to create. And when they're making something, they have this recipe and they come up with an idea in the moment to add something, a certain spice. And I let them do that because I think that they need to have those opportunities to be creative. And it's really fun to see what they come up with. And that's it.
Thank you, Megan. Any questions for Megan? Okay, we'll move on to the next subject area teacher. Welcome, Teri Yeason. It has been Teri's goal for the last 20 years to help students understand their own learning needs and to support them in the way they learn best. Teri is a math teacher of the required math classes and all the math electives offered at the community school. This includes college algebra, basic and applied statistics from the University of Minnesota. Teri is also a teacher for summer school and credit recovery. She is the advisor for our student equity group and the Positive Action Leaders Group. Teri also is a part of the district equity team and no hate space, no hate speech team. Go ahead, Teri. Teri, I can't hear you. Well, Teri figures that out. We can move on to Kelly and we'll come back to Teri. So Kelly, we're going to move on to you. Welcome, Kelly McDonald. She has her undergrad from St. Cloud State and a master's of education from St. Kate's. This is her first year in the district, but 11 years teaching overall. She left a tenured position in Indiana to return to her home roots to be closer to family. Her teaching philosophy centers around creating positive relationships and safe and comfortable environments for students. Community school is a great fit for Kelly. Go ahead, Kelly.
Thank you very much, Kelly, and thanks for having me. Like Kelly mentioned, I am an ELA teacher. My specialty is being English 9A, English 9B, English 10B, comp theory and practice, creative writing, and intro to media are all the classes that I teach at the community school. One of my main goals in my English classes at the community school is to really get the kids to question the world and not just the literature. I really want them to think critically about everything and not just our reading and writing. So to be able to be questioners, global thinkers, not just accepting what they read. So that's one of my main focuses. I also make sure I am doing authentic tasks whenever possible. In our action team at the community school, I've really been diving into project-based learning and starting to engage kids in those really meaningful ways so they can bring their passions into the classroom and into their learning. And one that I've created lately for my creative writing classes for project-based learning, you always have an essential question that the students are trying to research and learn about. And the question that I came up with is how can creative writing students use free rights through blogging to improve their health? So as you can see with that question, you know, they're learning about their own social, emotional things, how they can control their emotions. They're also going to be learning how to blog and also be able to write about things that they are passionate about. So and also, intro to media for the authentic tasks. I really focus on social media and technology, just understanding how to consume technology and news responsibly. Or always trying to think about how this can be utilized authentically outside of this school in future education or careers. Daily goals and rewards is also something I think about a lot. And I closely monitor that for their daily social, emotional learning needs, such as, does this specific group need movement like gym time, action? Or does this specific group that day need quiet time? Is it a snack time they need? Sometimes I have extra snacks. Just what do they need that day? And I've really seen a vast improvement in attention span and work completion when I use gym time as a reward. It might not work for all groups, but certain groups, that gym time is really a motivator in class. I always want to give students a voice in the morning and class time at the community school. Important thing for me is to give them the floor when they need to speak up, even if it's not about English language, art, or the topic that we are discussing that day. Sometimes they need a floor to speak on, sometimes they just want and need to be heard. So I'm really always trying to give them that time. Opportunity is to demonstrate standard mastery their way. That goes along with the next thing I have in there, too, class choices. Do we want to do it this way or do we want to do it that way today? That all lead to the same outcome, just depending how they're feeling that day. They want to do it group time, do they want to do it individually? Do they want to teacher-led? Just how are they feeling that day? Instead of always having it set up with the way the teacher thinks that it needs to be done. And going back to the opportunities to demonstrate standard mastery their way. A lot of things that this, one way that I, one option that I give that the students really like, especially in some of those electives, like CTP, Communication Theory and Practice, Creative Writing and Intro to Media, is letting them just sit down and chat with me or discuss their reading, discuss the lesson, just one-on-one and informal conversations so I can assess what standards and what they've got on the lesson that way. And then finally, allowing students to finish courses in credit recovery. I recently had a student who questioned, it's now towards the end of the quarter, and questioned me and he was thinking, what was the point in continuing work for this quarter? If he won't have enough time to complete it, he was really feeling defeated. You know, there's no point in me continuing or doing anything more, I won't have time to do it. And letting him know that, no, you can just pick this up in credit recovery. Nothing that you do is going to be a waste of time. We can just move forward in a different way at a different time. Really piqued his interest and got him a little bit more motivated to continue work for the rest of the quarter. So those are some of the things that I do at the community school. Thank you for listening. Let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you, Kelly. Teri, are you ready to go?
I hope so. Am I?
Yes, I hear you, oh, Teri.
Thank you. You want to put some slides for me? Next one. My courses are all individualized in a lot of different ways. I may explain a concept in different ways for different learning needs. And there's quite a few ways that a math problem can be explained, so that works well. I've rewritten Canvas courses for specific learners, if that's needed. Because when I'm in the classroom, I can do it as I'm moving through my day and it's just kind of a normal way to do it for me. But when it was on Canvas, that took a little extra. I always start by asking students to write or deliver because some of them don't like to write it out, but they'll talk to me about it, a math autobiography, so they can share their past experiences in there. Some have struggled for a long time and I really do need to know what didn't work and hopefully the things that did work. Sometimes kids use that as a time to say, hey, this is the past and I'm going to do it. I'm going to work hard and make sure I make it this time. I review the transcripts and pass grades. Sometimes that can tell me where the gaps are. And if I know that ahead of time, it helps a lot. I talk about mistakes as being a positive and a road to more learning. It's common when I say, I'm really glad to miss that problem because then we get to talk about it this way. Can we, next slide, please? I give opportunities to gain credit back. And they fail a quiz, we go over and talk about the things that they did wrong and do it again. We can go over a whole unit if it didn't work well, or maybe just a lesson. But that means at the end of the time that they have to do the course, they have already fixed all the problems with their grades. They are going to pass the course. And then some of those kids finished the trial early because they understood it or they'd taken the course a couple of times before. And so then they can start the next class. Some need just a little bit longer and that's okay, too. The expectations are all that students can do high-level math. And it just takes supports and a little bit of hard work. Always, we're talking about social and emotional wellbeing. I give students an opportunity to let me know that life is not the greatest that day and maybe math isn't what is in the front of their brain. So maybe we do a little, but tomorrow we do more. Thank you.
Thank you, Teri. Any questions for Teri? Okay, last but not least, please welcome Anne Tozle. She grew up on a dairy farm. She is our agriculture teacher here at the community school. She graduated from the University of Minnesota Twin Cities with a bachelor's degree in agriculture education in 2010. She taught one year in Annover and has been working in Forest Lake for the past 10 years, traveling between all secondary buildings. She's been married for 10 years. She has two children, Warren, who is eight now, I can't believe it, and Amelia is five. She loves to volunteer at her church, the County Farm Bureau, the County of, or the, yep, the County of American Dairy Association. And she enjoys anything outdoors or art-related. Go ahead, Anne.
Thanks, Kelly. As she said, I've taught in all the secondary buildings in the district at some point in my career here in Forest Lake. And the community school is definitely something special. It has a unique welcoming feel and the smaller class sizes, as you've heard from my colleagues, really allow us to individualize, allow us to make those connections with students who maybe fell through the cracks in some of the other places. And I teach at the high school right now and I work very hard to meet the needs of the 35, sometimes plus, students in my classes. But even when you're doing your very best, you know, you might not get to that kid today. And so having a smaller setting where we can really individualize things to meet their needs is a joy. And I love being a part of the community school. And one of the ways that we've individualized and made unique adaptations in my courses is through this food chemistry class that we developed a few years ago. And in that class, we teach the CHEM A standards for graduation, but we do it through food. So the top picture there is of a lab we did just the other day where students were calculating the molarity of solutions. And instead of, you know, using this chemical or that chemical, we were using Kool-Aid and sugar and water and talking about solutes and solvents and what are the different pieces here and how do we calculate these equations? And, you know, for a lot of kids, having that relevance, going from Megan's room to my room and we're using food and talking about different things and applying stuff we learned in Teri's or in Karen's room. And in my classroom, it really is fun to be able to see them make all those connections and build the skills that they need to be successful down the road. Several of my courses are concurrently enrolled with Hennepin Technical College. So my greenhouse class, my landscaping class allows students to meet college-level standards and have that under their belt as they pursue further education. And again, I've got some pre-COVID pictures here, but students working together, students finding success in really hands-on settings, which I love and am a very hands-on person myself and love to learn more visually and by manipulating things. And again, allows the kids to be creative and try different things and really experiment with the world around them. So Megan, next slide. I also work very hard to incorporate some service learning opportunities for students at the community school. And I think allowing them to work with others, I find joy in helping other people and I know that my students do as well. And when they can walk by the front of the building and say, I planted that or I helped mulch here, or I pulled weeds there. Or they see one of the younger students in the hallway, it was more prevalent when we were in the other building, but pass by and they give a little wave because they see their buddy that they read a story to earlier in the week. It's just a way to show our students that giving to others is a great source of joy in their lives. And it's something we can do easily, you know, opening the door, telling someone they have a nice haircut. You know, it's simple things to build that community and that warm, welcoming environment. I hope that I'm providing students with some real-world experiences that, like I mentioned earlier, they can apply from their other four classes. So, you know, in landscaping, when we're calculating how many yards of mulch we need, they're using those geometry skills that Teri has taught them upstairs. And the cooking skills that Megan has taught them in her class, we're pulling them in as we're doing some different labs in my food chemistry course. So I hope that they have that cross-curricular application in my courses. And of course, every student who takes A classes can be involved in our Effort Bay program where there are a number of wonderful opportunities where we're developing students' career readiness, developing them personally and helping them be productive citizens and a part of our society. So thank you for the opportunity to share today and for all the work you do supporting our students and our schools.
Thank you, Anne. Thank you, Ann. Any questions for Ann?
Member Tyson?
Yes, hi, Ann. Thank you for that report. Last time you were here, we talked about utilizing some or all of the previous greenhouse. Did that ever happen?
Yes, it is in the works. We were delayed a little bit with not having students in school last spring. My hope was to put up the greenhouse with my greenhouse class, but because we were distance learning, that didn't happen. But the frame is up. We're hoping to stretch the plastic in the coming weeks. And my students in the greenhouse class this spring have already planted a bunch of things, and they're on a little row cart, and we are just waiting for the weather to warm up enough that we can put those plants out there. So they've been very busy and enjoying the hands-on piece of that class, and I'm very excited to have the structure almost complete and get them out there as well.
Wow, that is good news. And I have to say that I 100% agree with you that the community school is a very special place.
Member Olson?
I just want to say thank you to each of you. It was really fun hearing about the teaching strategies. It's very evident that you are all passionate and dedicated to your students, so thank you for that. Our community education students are very lucky to have you. I do have one question. Kelly, how many students do we have enrolled currently?
Currently at the community school, we have 141. And 28 of those students are dual-enrolled, so we have a shuttle bus that goes back and forth between the high school and the community school every hour. So students have access to the high school, and students also have access to the community
Member Ethan?
Thank you. And, you know, I had questions for every single person, but almost each one of your segments is what we normally get in an entire meeting, so this is a ton of great information, and I really appreciate it. I could talk, questions for all of them, it's fantastic programs. I almost feel jealous that I couldn't go to this school. And even reaching backwards, the credit recovery and summer school efforts, just one kind of stat I like to keep track of, how many people who are not enrolled in Forest Lake area public schools attended credit recovery and summer school? Round numbers are fine, so throwing it at you.
Yeah, and so what we do is, at the elementary level, we don't really get a lot of enrollment from St. Peter's, but between NLA and Lila, we have usually about between 60 and 80 kids, and we try to keep those kids in the same classroom so that they know each other and they're familiar with someone. Credit recovery, 912, we receive many, many registrations from NLA and referrals, so we have, I want to say maybe 50 to 60 NLA students as well. We do use that opportunity to recruit those students and families as well because of the great experiences, as you can see, that we give the students in their classrooms during credit recovery and summer school. So it's a recruitment tool as well, because kids love the teachers. It's about what happens in the classrooms, and they have a great experience. So it's a good recruitment option for us as a district as well. Does that answer your question?
Yes, yes, completely. And thank you for everything that you do, because the passion for education and meeting kids where they are is obvious from all of you. And just as Member Tyson said earlier, I do hope that a lot of these ideas spin out into all the elementaries and middle schools and standard high school, that everybody gets to benefit from the methods and methodologies. So thank you for everything, and the research you obviously do.
Oh, I just wanted to say thank you again for the great presentation, and you can see that you're passionate about what you do, and the kids are just very lucky to have all of you be their advocates. I guess my question was going to be, for COVID, do you see, I mean, how do you think that's, I mean, I know it's affected every student, but do you feel like, have you seen a decrease in, like you said, like, I don't know, just, you know, their ability to work and to be successful in the classroom? I know that's a big, broad question, but I just wondered, are they, and a lot of them, are they going to be doing credit recovery come summer, a lot of the students, because of the learning loss?
I can answer part of that, and I would really reach out to my team to chime in as well about the learning needs of kids, but we are currently receiving applications and registrations from students at the elementary level and secondary level. We anticipate large numbers in summer school. We have 900 students who are referred K6 from teachers. Those are not registrations, but referrals. So we have posted outside of the district for teachers to make sure I have enough teachers to cover the classrooms. I anticipate double the numbers for credit recovery based on the needs of kids at the high school and also at the community school. We want to offer as many opportunities as possible and as much flexibility as possible for those kids to achieve their goal, to graduate from high school. Again, it's about meeting the standards, mastering the content area, and then they are awarded the credit. It's not about the seat time. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much, Board and Superintendent Massey, for your continued support. We can feel it at the community school. We have your support. Thank you so much.
With that, we will move forward onto positive happening. Member Olson, would you like to start?
Yeah, I don't have the whole lecture report, although I'm looking forward to the NSBA conference next week, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, virtual, so I hope it, I hope it's a good one. I was impressed with the MSBA one, so NSBA should be equally good.
Member Rayfield?
Yeah, just the positive happening for me is that we, it's the second week of in-person learning, and, you know, I sent Jacqueline off on the bus, and she comes home, she's a new kid, you know, being meeting with other kids, and she didn't realize what an emotional effect it would have, or just being with those other kids and being a part of what's happening. So it's really nice to see that, you know, we made that effort, got everybody in there, and God bless the teachers for their work, making that all happen.
Member Tyson?
Yes, I attended a Washington County Connect leadership meeting. I learned at the high school, Andy Strick, he attends those as well. I also did Breaking the Cynicism, Seth Turner, I remembered his name from a national conference. He was from the management foundation, and he did, it was a great refresher for me, working with legislators, and a great idea that I'll help anybody else with there from here. But it was really good to listen to the statistics and the research they do on legislators, you know, how do you, what are your enrollments? And then it's been fun, just the sports and all of our teams won state, and I listened to a few of the games, but the alpine and trotting, the state alpine title, so proud of that, and the girls, the Forest Lake group basketball team was state gymnastics state. So, and then the Nordic girls, women's skiing, state champions again. So that's my positive happening.
Member Kent?
On a personal level, the positive happening was on March 25th, I had my second COVID shot, so I was really happy about that. And that made me reflect back, to bring it back to the school district, it made me reflect back on the last year we've had and all the things that have happened. So I'm very, very encouraged by the fact that all students are back in school in person. I think that's just a great, great achievement, that we have COVID shots for the administration and staff and teachers, and that many are participating, so I think that's a great thing. The potential for the in-person prom and graduation is outstanding. I mean, I'm really excited about that. I'm so glad that people will be able to be back, the kids will be able to be back together. The senior academic awards may happen, we hope, and the sports and other activities that are back, as Member Tyson said. So I'm very encouraged, and I'll leave you with this. I found a quote from Albert Einstein that said, "Learn from yesterday," which I think has been our last year, "live for today," which we're doing right now, "and hope for tomorrow." That's Albert Einstein. That ends my report.
Wow, nice, thank you.
Thank you, Member Kent.
So to follow up, is Albert Einstein? I don't know. So, sports-wise, yeah, it's just, it's amazing. Our athletes persevered through all this COVID times and have really just done exceptionally well. I don't know whether the girls play, if they have yet. I haven't followed girls' basketball.
They played on Tuesday.
Tuesday, okay, gotta make sure I keep on that. Derek Cardinal winning wrestling again, I mean, he's just an amazing athlete. And I've had a few, and I give my corporate football scholarship, I have four applicants, so that was good, because I know it was, last year was really hard for people to even apply, just because of what was going on in the schools. So I'm excited to go through those, let the boys pick someone, and, yeah, just seeing the parking lot full as I drive by is always such a great feeling. I just love it. So just glad to have the kids back.
Hey, thank you. And I, COVID was top of my list, I'm halfway through the chat sequence, so getting there. One fantastic thing that Lino does is they have a business day every year for third graders, and up until this point, they learned a lot about business, they had to do, they had to take a loan, and they have to do a profit-loss statement, and they really have a whole book that they fill out learning about good economics of running a little bakery, they make signs, and this year, and usually, parents go in and you can shop their tables, and it's a great interactive activity. So this year, it went virtual, so they each made their own Google form, and you could buy online, and they delivered orders. So they went virtual this year, and it was really great, but my daughter brings home her, like, her profit-loss statement, they were, they didn't quite sell out, but really close, and learning lessons from different price points and different things. So it's, they're in third grade, but they completely get it. So I'm glad that this is sinking in early. And the Read-a-Thon was another big thing at Lino, so they had their celebration date on Friday last week, and had a lot of things going on. I was in the school, and I was able to read to some of the younger kid classes, and the ability of the kindergartners to sit there with masks on in perfect little lines and answer questions, and this just, I think it's phased adults more than it's phased the kids. So I'm really happy every time I see the kids, and some hate it, but the majority are just like, oh, this is what we do now. So it's been a good experience. This is like, Member Tyson has the sports, I have the elementary schools. That concludes my report.
Sounds like Amazon's going to have some competition. So for myself, much like Member Rayfield, it's just been really nice to see some consistency back and seeing Bodie go to school every single day, that, you know, four days a week has been great. It's just so nice to see the parking lots full and everybody sort of a little bit of normalcy back, so. With that, we'll move on to reports, workshops and conferences. Nothing. We'll move to communications. Member Tyson?
I was absent, I didn't have a report.
I've got it. In the communications committee, we met on March 18th. We talked a little bit about live-in-person roundups coming in late April and early May. We talked about the potential for a link on a Realtor portal, which made just a ton of sense. I mean, when people buy a new home, they, you know, they deal with a Realtor, they can now connect to the schools really easily. So we talked about Spanish immersion and having banners at the schools. Renee presented a district website review, kind of talking about our headings and subheadings. And we looked at the Wayzetta School District, which if you want to check it out, is kind of an interesting look, I mean, for how we might try to rearrange our website, so. And last but hardly least, Tracy did a community ed update and talked about the catalog, which I think probably, if you live in town, you certainly received. I received mine in the mail, the spring and summer catalog, which was outstanding, just a great piece of work. That was the communications committee, and that ends that report.
All right, 916, also, Member Kent?
916, we had a special meeting on Wednesday, March 24th, that ran from about 3:30 to 8:00 PM. It was to decide on the potential new superintendent for 916. There were, it was narrowed down to three candidates who all came in, Dr. Favor, Dr. Zambreno, and Dr. Bowe all presented that night. And at the end of the night, the committee decided to make an offer to Dr. Val Bowe, who has been with the Northeast Metro 916 District for 15 years, and actually, on a, again, personal note, I happen to work for her when I worked at Connor Blue and worked at 916, and she's an outstanding individual, I think Member Tyson would agree, she's just an outstanding person. So she was elected as the superintendent for 916. And that ends that report.
Member Kent, we'll move to policy committee. Member Luther?
Policy committee this month was pretty small. Well, we had 15 people. We mostly went over consent agenda and touched on how we run the meeting, and it did come up with some changes, so we will, just in case anybody cares about the background, consent agendas should not really be discussed, and we tend to want to recognize those who give gifts and those who are retiring, and so we've just pulled them off the consent agenda so we can more easily recognize those things in the future. So just housekeeping, so it was a pretty lame month otherwise.
Curriculum Instruction and Equity, also, Member Luther?
So we should mix these up. So there was 13 people in attendance, and we're all introduced officially to JP, who's taking over. We had a introduction, or actually, a reintroduction to the Ranger Online that was moving right along up until COVID hit, and then all the preparations for that program, which was supposed to be an online blended learning and technology option, the tools were very handy to have because it helped us transition to all the online learning. But now, kind of circling back to how do we move forward as a 912 supplement that will be non-synchronous, they're really starting to polish it up. Now it has a logo, they have descriptions for classes, and it looks like they're moving forward, looking to move forward. And it's really kind of grown with the excellent beta test of a pandemic to test the system, and they've gone from people being somewhat skeptical about teaching online or having an online class to very much adoption from almost all the teachers, and being able to move forward should be fairly simple. That concludes that report.
All right, Snap Olker, Member Olson?
Yes, we talked about federal stimulus funding. We discussed the teaching and learning position restructuring and what that might look like. We also had a discussion about state guidance and how that will affect prom, graduation, academic awards, and next year's school year. Happy to see us moving forward with a prom event on May 22nd at the Mall of America, so our seniors have something to look forward to and celebrate.
Buildings and Grounds, Member Kent?
In Buildings and Grounds, Larry presented the long-term facilities maintenance review, maintenance revenue review. We talked again about the construction projects update, and of course, if you drive by the old Central Junior High, you'll see a pile of whatever out there, the school, I guess, out there on the parking lot. And we had a report, as usual, outstanding, glowing report from Bill Schwartz, and that was the Building and Grounds.
I mean, our schools, Member Ethan?
Yeah, I do not have a report for tonight.
Community Education, Member Kent?
We did not have a community education meeting this month. However, I just want to say that the catalog, as I mentioned earlier, came out, I think it's outstanding, and I think we're probably one of five, I may have said this in the past, we're one of five districts that actually produce that kind of a catalog, probably in the whole state, and I mean, many of them have just kind of given up on it because of COVID, but we continue to produce just some of the best stuff ever, so compliments to the whole, you know, community ed staff for everything they do.
I couldn't agree more with that sentiment.
I agree.
We'll move to finance, if that matters.
We discussed, Jackie Heigl from NMKR was in attendance, and she discussed the current year revenue review, which were on target. We talked about fiscal year '21 expansion.
We talked about fiscal year '21 expenditure budget status, legislative update, kind of giving us a feel for how the state is doing and what their, what their funding looks like for next year. We did fiscal year '22 budget status update. And the agenda tonight, we're also going to be discussing a medical premium that we, you know, that's down the road here, but how we're not, we have not really increased our medical premiums for many, many years, maybe one time. And it is on the agenda to increase just a little bit to family coverage. And we're also, talked a little bit about the ESAR and GEAR's possible funding that we'll hopefully be receiving. That concludes our report.
Thank you, Member Portman. City of Forest Lake, Member Tyson?
Yes, they had no meetings this week, the week of 3/29, but I did see Councilman Husnick. He spoke of how they're kind of weary of doing virtual, they're looking forward to being back in. They also, the city has good livestream options written in their website, too. He talked about how things are opening up. I think the Compost, Compost site opens up this weekend, and the golf has been open. And so he's looking forward to getting back at some of our meetings as well. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Member Tyson. We'll move to the superintendent's report. Dr. Massey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As many of you mentioned, it's an exciting time in the district with all of our kids back. Can there be nine something?
Oh.
Sorry about that. I'll, I'll spare you a PowerPoint. So just a really exciting time in the district with our kids back in the classroom. You look out our windows, and our softball kids are on field, our baseball kids are on both teams. This time last year, our fields were bare, so we have come a tremendous, live-on way in such a short time. We are beginning our planning with that for next year. We are working through our staffing process, and we will have staffing recommendations to you at the mid-April board meeting. But along with that, as was briefly mentioned with the community school, we know we need to be prepared for some distance learning program next year because I think it's fair to assume that we'll be in some COVID environment still at the start of next year. So we're not sure the magnitude of a distance learning program, but we anticipate we need to provide a certain level of Ranger Academy distance learning, and we're planning that in the background as well. We are still monitoring COVID cases, and I actually am on the Minnesota Department of Health website every week and every day with daily updates and then the weekly updates. And we're beginning to see a slight uptick in the state of Minnesota. We're seeing that locally. We're seeing that with the test positivity rate. We're not in an alarming level, but the statewide cases, local cases are beginning to tip upward, and it's important that we understand that. We're also seeing cases in our schools, and we're contact tracing and chasing those down and continuing to urge and encourage our students and families to test regularly so that tests can identify kids that need to stay at home and not affect the other kids. We, with JP Jacobson taking the, and being hired for the director of teaching and learning position, we had the middle school position posted, actually closed now. We're scheduled to interview our screening round next week on April 7. From there, we'll pull, or bring that pool down to a smaller group and hold full interviews on April 23. At the legislature, our transportation bill has been heard both in the Senate and in the House, and has received an extremely positive review from the Senate Finance and Policy Committee in the House. And in both chambers, our, our transportation bill has been held over to the Council of Cruze in the underless education bills. You probably know this, but the Senate is currently controlled by Republicans, so the Senate Finance Education Committee is controlled by Republicans. And we received just as positive review there as we did in the House. So it's got bipartisan support. And we are frankly more optimistic now than we have been in years past. So I'll keep you posted as that transportation bill moves into place. A number of you have mentioned the ESAR funds and the Federal Rescue Act that was recently passed at the federal level and signed by the President. We anticipate a significant amount of data, not just coming into the state, but coming into the school district. We have not received that allocation yet, and we anticipate seeing that in next week or two. We had a brief conversation about summer school, and you heard Principal LaFine mention that we have 900-plus kids at the elementary level. And now, we can bring kids who don't qualify under the ALC Extended School Year Criteria, any kid who needs summer school, not qualifies for summer school, as determined by a parent or the classroom teacher based on learning laws. The state is aiding that process with $4 per student per hour of added funding for summer school. So that additional revenue, in addition to the dollars generated through extended-year funding formulas, or extended-year hours that generate membership hours, will be very helpful with respect to running summer school. A number of you have mentioned prom and graduation. You stole my thunder there. We've got prom presently scheduled down at the Mall of America. We're not the only school to do that. Our kids are getting excited about that. If you've seen the ad, it's, it's a mask parade, so playing on the concept, and hopefully drawing a lot of excitement. And based on the current large group gathering guidance that we have from the governor, Governor's Executive Board, and Minnesota Department of Health, we believe we can hold an outdoor graduation with appropriate distancing of our students and families. Our field won't be available because it's under construction, but our parking lots are wide open, so we are working with that and considering adjusted timeframes based on heat and asphalt and all those things. So we're trying to consider, Mr. Paul, I should say, and his team, are considering all the different factors that. And the last piece I would add is, you'll, you'll see communication from me on our school board evaluation process and self-evaluation process, and then school board goal setting, and ultimately superintendent goal setting, all tied to our strategic plan. A lot of that work has been put on hold due to all the virtual work that we've been doing, but we are now staging that work to occur at a workshop this summer. I've got tentative dates for June, June 17th, but I believe there might be a conflict with at least one member, so I'll work with you to find a date there. And with that, that concludes my report.
Member Angel? Could I, Super Kettow, could I just ask a quick question? Could you, what's, what's the quickie timeline on the, starting the work on the fields?
We believe that the first part of May, the frost restrictions will be lifted, and as soon as they're lifted, Peterson and other contractors will be having their equipment in order.
Great. Pretty exciting.
It is. Yeah. So stay tuned and be excited.
I just have a question regarding summer school. Do you think it's going to be an issue to get staffing to teach that many students in the summer?
Yeah, there are regular staff that are saying, "Sign me up," and there are others saying, "I need a break."
I know. That's, I just, it's a lot of students.
Yeah. So it, it, those of you who are substitute teachers, and if you have an interest in summer school, we're asking you to consider that. And we'll take teachers from other districts as well. Not all districts are offering summer school.
Okay.
So that'll be a challenge, but we're working hard to address it. Yeah, that's very exciting.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing done, we'll move to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve Sunday's consent agenda?
So moved. Second?
Motion a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vows, motion passes. We'll move on to eight action items. A1 donations. Do we have a motion to approve the donations?
So moved.
Second?
Motion a second. Discussion, Member Kettow?
This month, we had a total cash donation of $11,116.3. However, there was also a donation of an event menu, a venue, sorry, event venue by Amy and Bruce Hussett, who are using an event venue at Abella Weddings and Event Farm, which ended up to be $6,000 in value to, to fund a special needs program prom location. So outstanding donation. We had eight, 800, let's see, 8,000, 9,000 and 4,842.6 for both the Forest Lake Boys Lacrosse Booster Club and the Girls Booster Lacrosse Club. We had $600 from the Forest Lake Elementary PTA to fund some things there. And we had a total of 831.91 from the, I'm sorry, $600 from the Hugo American Legion and 831.91 from the Forest Lake Elementary PTA. So again, the total was $11,116.3, and we'd like to thank all the organizations and people who made those donations to the district.
Any further discussion? All in favor of accepting the donations as reds? Aye?
Aye.
Vows, motion passes. Moving to eight two, job description, Director of Teaching and Learning Policy, 214, Dr. Massey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With the transition of Diane Georgi retiring and JP Jacobson being hired for the Director of Teaching and Learning, we've taken a close look at this job description. You can see that it was last updated in 2007, and some of the concepts, terminology has, has changed since then, and the nature of the work has evolved as well, and those pieces are captured in this update. And with that, administration would recommend a move.
We have a motion to approve eight two. So moved?
Second?
Motion a second. Discussion?
I'm, I'm just curious, I want to ask the superintendent, under 19, who supervises the peer coaches and the reading instructor groups that we've had? That doesn't fall under the Director of Teaching and Learning, right?
Yes, it does.
It does?
Yep, all those coordinators, coaches, peer coaches.
That is, I kind of missed that? Okay. I just read technology, family support, and we're good. Teaching and learning, we're here. Okay. Awesome.
Hearing none. Can I make a roll call on this one?
Yes, all here.
Yeah. Member Clerk, would you please say your roll call? Sorry?
Aye. Roll call for everything. Member Kettow?
Aye.
Aye, Member Olson?
Aye.
Member Rayfield?
Aye.
Member Tyson?
Aye.
Member Peterson?
Aye.
Member Luther votes aye. Member Corcoran?
Aye.
Motion passes. We'll move to eight three, discipline policy. Dr. Massey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This policy is reviewed annually, and it gets a close look from elementary, middle school, high school, and community school administration. And this year, the recommended change is simply a policy reference change. You'll see that on page four. With that, administration recommends approval.
We have a motion to approve eight three?
So moved.
Okay.
Motion a second. Discussion. Hearing none. Member Clerk?
Member Olson?
Aye.
Member Rayfield?
Aye.
Member Tyson?
Aye.
Member Peterson?
Aye.
Member Luther votes aye. Member Corcoran?
Aye.
And Member Kettow?
Aye.
Motion passes. Eight four, instructional material films policy, 610. Dr. Massey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This policy was recently reviewed by the policy committee, and it was put before the policy committee as simply to facilitate a transition from the policy series 500 to the policy series 610. So a simple modification in terms of its location within our innovation system. So with that, administration recommends approval.
We have a motion to approve eight four. So moved?
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. Hearing none. Member Clerk, would you please say roll call?
Member Rayfield?
Aye.
Member Tyson?
Aye.
Member Peterson?
Aye.
Member Luther votes aye. Member Corcoran?
Aye.
Member Kettow?
Aye.
Member Olson?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving to eight five, the district reserve pay plan. Dr. Massey?
Mr. Chair, this is actually the third time this concept has been brought to you. Initially, when this reserve pay plan was put in place, then it was extended to the end of March. And because we are still contact tracing and still in a COVID environment, we feel it's relevant to extend this concept through the end of the school year. You can see in this draft here, the recommendation is to continue through June 10, at which time this extended district reserve pay plan would expire. With that, administration recommends approval.
We have a motion to approve eight five?
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
Motion a second. Discussion.
I appreciate that we're doing what we can to not make COVID more of a burden for people. It is what it is, but we're doing as much as we can.
And I would add, thank you for that. And I would add that with a large percentage of our staff fully vaccinated now, they, they are not necessarily close contacts if there's a positive case in the classroom. So there's not a need for them to quarantine while the kids might be in class. And when there are quarantine situations, teachers continue to work. Under that scenario, this plan would not be implemented. So fewer and fewer staff are accessing on these days.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Member Clerk, would you please say your roll call?
Member Tyson?
Aye.
Member Peterson?
Aye.
Member Luther votes aye. Member Corcoran?
Aye.
Member Kettow?
Aye.
Member Olson?
Aye.
And Member Rayfield?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving to eight six, the medical insurance premium change. Director Martini?
Thank you and good evening. Our employee benefits committee and the finance committee occasionally look at this type of data. We thought we were going to end up with a 5% or 6% premium increase, and we were pleasantly surprised. I want to share with you that we did get three proposals. We opened them Monday, the 29th, at 2:00 PM. We had three faculty in place, and Dr. Massey and I and Bernie McCall are brokered. So we thoroughly reviewed the different proposals from public employee insurance program. Two of their plans actually have higher premiums than ours, and they just experienced a 9% and a 10% increase. Medica was not conforming, although they were competitive. They were trying to get our business. One of the things that we pride ourselves on is that we've only had the one increase in premium in the last seven years. So that's pretty impressive. But it's because we have a variety of incentives in our plan that have people perform better, act healthier, and ultimately be healthier. We have an HRA incentive for visiting the on-site clinic for annual wellness. We have other incentives if you go to our specialty med cost-saving solutions. We offer a narrow network for surgeries, and then we offer HRA deposits and eliminate copays, or that kind of approach. So these incentives are really critical to our plan, and they give us this history. Many of you have probably seen this chart before, but we have from 2013, 14 through 2019, 20, the same premiums. Now, we adjusted family levels last year, and we thought we would have adjusted family levels by $200 per month. We were seeing enormous growth in spousal and dependent large claims. So we shared with finance committee last month, and we've talked at benefits committee in the last two months. And interestingly enough, we're only going to need to increase our family premiums by $100 a month, or it's $50 a paid period for those that take family. That yields approximately a 3% increase. And medical trend is, we shared at that meeting, between 5% and 6% this year, let alone the fact that PEP, one of the plans that's pushed by Education Minnesota, they just experienced a 9% and a 10%. So we would ask your approval to put these premium levels in effect, $770 per month for singles, and an increase from 1950 to 2050 per month for family.
Do we have any questions for Director Martini? I would entertain a motion to approve eight point six.
So moved. Second. Happily. Yes.
Aye. Right. Any discussion?
That's a very nice, good news, Elara. Yeah. Wow. And below industry standards, and we haven't upped it for how many, seven years?
It turns out, I think, that average over the seven-year period, half a percent.
Yeah. Wow.
That's really great statistic. Member Rayfield?
Yeah, I think it's... A lot of credit goes to you and your team for figuring out a way to get that done, and I've been eternally grateful for that. But it's also that our employees are very aware of, you know, how choices make a difference in, you know, what they plan and program. So I think a lot of their behavior has kept those premiums low, and it's very much appreciated.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Member Clerk, would you please say a roll call?
Member Peterson?
Aye.
Member Luther votes aye. Member Corcoran?
Aye.
Member Kettle?
Aye.
Member Olson?
Aye.
Member Rayfield?
Aye.
And Member Tyson?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving to eight seven, recommendation to award bid for re-roofing at Education Center, Director Martini.
Well, I'm pleased to always bring you good news. We saved $47,000 compared to the second lowest bidder. We asked you to recommend McPhillips Brother Roofing Company in the amount of $208,500 for the at-center re-roofing work. We had six bidders. We had good coverage, and it looked like the bids were going to be, as we read them, somewhere between $250,000 and $280,000. And McPhillips was the last red one at $208,500.
Do we have a motion to approve the recommendation for bid?
So moved.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second. Discussion?
I just have a question. Did he elaborate as to how he came in so much lower than everybody else? I mean, he doesn't know what anybody else did, but yeah.
So that's an important thing, that we have our experts. In this case, Joel Severson from Atkins Association made contact and said... Did you miss something? Are you sure? Because we have a pretty tight grouping, and McPhillips said, "We want the business. We're tired of Palmer West always re-roofing Forest Lake."
Wow. That's how he gets in the door. Now he learns. Right?
Yes.
Another question. Where are they located? Are they local?
Yes, but I don't know if it's St. Paul or Minneapolis.
Okay, but generally local.
They've been frequent in our projects.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Member Clerk, would you please say a roll call?
Member Luther votes aye. Member Corcoran?
Aye.
Member Kettle?
Aye.
Member Olson?
Aye.
Member Rayfield?
Aye.
Member Tyson?
Aye.
And Member Peterson?
Aye.
Ayes.
All right. Motion passes. Moving on to new business, the first reading of the intermediate District 916 Joint Powers Agreement, Dr. Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to present through a few slides here on this joint power agreement with 916. We've heard of our membership with 916 a couple of times tonight. And you know that we are a member of the intermediate District 916 for specialized, significantly specialized services for students on an IEP. And the purpose of the redesign of this joint powers agreement that creates the collaborative of the 13 different districts is a... St. Francis is actually withdrawing from the membership, their membership from the district. There's no specific language in the joint powers agreement that defines how a district... What doesn't... That doesn't define the liability of a district when they leave the district. So it's left to open negotiation and settlement and determination. So there's now an effort with the current superintendent and the board and superintendent members to define what that exit process and obligation liabilities were. So I'm going to walk through those. But before I do, our current joint powers agreement with 916 is we became... We were a member in the late 90s or in the early 2000s, and then we dropped out of the district for a period of time and rejoined in 2013. Forest Lake area students represent just under 6% of the 916 enrollment. And the benefits of the membership, if you can imagine, the specialized services that students with significant needs may need. The need of one student oftentimes varies significantly from the needs of another student. And having those specialized services in-house and within the district and running this level of programming in a single district is really cost prohibitive. Now, one, because you need only a limited amount of time for a specialized service. You only need it for one student or two students. And finding that service being available is hard. So we collaborate with other districts so that we maximize that level of service. Our current membership cost, give or take, and fluctuates from year to year based on our level of participation in programming, is about $2.5 million a year. About 2 million of that is actually tuition services, our actual programming class for students, and then our associated cost to run the program as a collaborative between districts. We have currently, with the number of students we have there, this level of services that we're benefiting from currently, you can see the level of significant and specialized services that are provided for our students. In 2021, we have 30 students who are receiving services through 916. And you can see the numbers on the two previous years. So the proposed new joint powers agreement, again, is intended to identify the specific exit agreement and criteria for a district to choose to leave, hoping to have this in place by July 1st of this year. So in terms of the withdrawal, the withdrawal notice must be given on or before February 1st and shall be effective June 30th of the calendar year following the notice. So that's setting the timeline for withdrawal if the district chooses to exit or withdraw from the district. There are five components being added to the terms for exiting the district. Long-term employment obligations. And you can see here that this relates to post-employment benefits and the obligation that we would have as part member, as our membership of the district. So that is determined, as you can see in the last bullet, on the three-year average of our actual payment times our percent of enrollment. So in this case, it would be times 5.9%, as we represent that part of that amount of the enrollment. So that would calculate the other employment benefits component in terms of our liability if we were to leave. Let me add that there is no plan on our part to exit 916. So this is establishing the criteria and the process, but we are extremely pleased with the services on this plan. I just want that to be stated. There is a debt service obligations that we have, and should a district decide to leave, the payment of that debt service is calculated in the last bullet there. The exiting member's current year lease of the obligation times the number of vesting payments. You can see that that diminishes the longer a district is a member of 916. We actually received an initial calculation based on our current year membership. And in conversation at the astute recollection of Member Tyson, helped me understand, remember that we were a member previously. So we were able to get those five additional years when we were a member of it. So it's, we're at the 13-year criteria. Again, if you put the filter on it, what would it cost for Forest Lake? Current liability release, the exiting district will forfeit any proportional share of the district's 916 asset. And 916 will not hold the exiting districts responsible for any additional liabilities noted after the course of the existing year. If the leaving member agrees to a single-year allocation of the membership fee per the EPU, the adjusted pupil unit, equal to the rate set when the leaving district gave notice of departure. So again, the payment calculation would be the membership fee times our adjusted pupil unit, and then times the number of vesting fees, which you see on the previous slide. The fourth component would be future member withdrawal fee. Newer future districts would be held to this, and there'd be a $50 fee multiplied by the adjusted pupil unit of that district. The withdrawal fee described in this section does not apply to a school district that joins a district owner after the effective date of the agreement. So for a district that joins after this is signed, the $50 toll adds the adjusted pupil unit. Then lastly, the payment structure will be made as soon as possible following the effective date of withdrawal and so on. You can see the timeline and process for that time. And then the timeline for implementing this new joint powers agreement would be with adoption of the June 2nd board. So tonight is an initial introduction to you on these components. I'll ask for your approval at the main meeting. Our current severance cost, if we were to leave, just to give you a perspective of what that would be, it would be based on our current liability, based on program, other health and benefit, other employment benefits, lease levy, membership fee, total would be $472,682.85. Again, we have no interest or intention to leave the district. With that, I'll take any questions.
Senator Angel? So is this something, is this something that 916 is looking to have kind of duplicated throughout all the member districts? Or is this just a relation, something between us and them?
No, it would apply to any member of the district. So this would be established as part of the joint powers that forms the collaborative that spells out for any district, should they decide to leave, they have long-term or liability, ongoing liability.
Yeah.
And currently, there's nobody calculating that other than negotiations are coming to a agreement. So this is intended to establish what that would be, so people, so districts would know explicitly what that costs.
No, thank you.
Is there anything that I'm not finding about arbitration?
No, I'd have to go through it explicitly if there's a disagreement. But the intent here is that these components are well-defined on the front end so that there is no dispute on what those costs would be.
No, I agree, and this is actually really very standard corporate, and it's an excellent thing for new partnerships or corporations to have when everybody is still friendly discussing it. But just an arbitration clause usually saves lawyer fees on either side in the event of anything needing to be discussed in a separation situation.
I can dig into this further, and I can raise that question.
So Steve, is this replacing another document?
It's updating the current joint powers agreement.
Yeah. And so if it goes into place June 2nd, is St. Francis is falling under the previous?
No, they've been in negotiations for a number of months, and they will establish... The goal is to establish a figure that would be similar to this current...
Okay.
That would be identified through this calculation process. But these pieces would not apply to them.
I think this is really good and lends a lot of stability to Northeast Metro and the joint powers. So thank you for your work with that.
How, maybe I missed it. How long is the agreement in effect? Is it an annual agreement, or does it have to be signed every year, or?
No, I don't know the answer to that. The joint powers, I'd have to look into whether or not it's approved annually by the membership.
Okay. I'm just curious, because it's a very in-depth document. So just was wondering.
So if you join and you're accepted, you petition the board, and you sign it, that's your district.
These are the terms under which, in the future, you would join 916.
Right. And once you sign that, then it's...
You're obligated.
You're obligated for that entire time. Thank you again.
Any further questions? Thank you, Dr. Massey. You need no business on that first reading. Review your upcoming calendar dates, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Motion a second. All those in favor of adjournment signify by aye.
Aye.
Close.